And call the meeting to order, it's 4:31. We're doing a remote attendance pursuant to state executive orders 2020-07 and 2020-18, which temporarily suspend the in-person presence requirements and eliminate the limitation on remote access of the Illinois Meeting, Open Meetings Act due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The rest of the text is in the, in the agenda. And so we are going to move on to the consent agenda. The requested suggested change is to move Mr. Tompkins to the after, let's do after written communications from the public that works. So you can, so you can get out of here.
Your time, no need to hurt for me.
No, it's fine. So this is the consent agenda, it's including the approval of the agenda approval of the April 15th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. And does anybody have any comments on that? I only had one change, and that is to Kate's name. Michelle, it says Kathy. And Kate, you're on mute, just, or we can't hear you, so.
Okay.
So could I have a motion?
Move.
All right. Okay, so we'll do our orders, so Amy.
Yes.
Kate? We still can't hear you, Kate. And Sophia?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Michael? And Kate, yes.
Yes, okay, figured it out.
All right, so you're, are you voting yet?
Yes.
Okay, so we will move the Benson Signs Agenda item to after written communications. Moving on to public comments, did we have anybody join? Okay. And written communication from the public, I believe we've received.
You all saw, you all saw the, the points about the damaged items.
Yes.
For damaged items, so.
And I did respond. Okay. So if there's nothing else, then we will move on to the presentation from Mr. Tompkins. There he is.
Good evening.
Hello.
Rick, I'm assuming that everyone has seen everything that I have set that we prepared.
Everybody's seen that, and they probably haven't had much time to chew on the, on the warranty. But let me go ahead and, and share that screen so that so that everybody can see it.
Great, there you go, thank you for that. Well, I'll just, I'll just go through a brief synopsis. First of all, my name is Jason Tompkins, and I'm the general manager with Benson Signs and Graphics here in Decatur. And you probably recognize the name, maybe even the logo, and I see a few faces on here that I recognize. So it's nice to be with you tonight. Rick and I have been working on this project for a bit now, and I can assure you, the, the day those pictures were taken, it was as rainy and cold as it looks, so a far better day today. But obviously, this is a, what we're proposing here is a new, a new LED message board that would install onto your existing freestanding sign structure that is out in front of the library on the west side. We have looked at this from, from many different standpoints, and really, we, we feel, in our professional opinion, that where we're showing this on the freestanding structure really is about the best place for it. And this, this photo in this rendering was, was taken from my car. I believe I was stopped, but to try to give a really good street view. And I think it's really, you really catch it, you really start catching this structure really well at about, back at the courthouse as you're headed north. So visibility, the time to be able to see it is, is really, really good. We are proposing what's called a 16-millimeter resolution sign, not to get too deep into the technicalities, but for example, the message boards that we put up at the, at the Civic Center about three or four years ago, those are also 16-millimeter resolutions, and that just, in very layman's terms, every, every LED is about 16 millimeters apart. So really good resolution, very high resolution, comparable, again, to the Civic Center. What you see out at Richland Community College is also a 16-millimeter. And really, based on where that is located, probably what we would recommend. Because it's far enough away from the street, high enough that you can, you can spend far more dollars on a better resolution, but the eye and the brain really aren't going to be able to tell the difference, so. By the city code, you are allowed 50 square foot of signage in message board. And so that's why we came up with the size that we did. That's the, I think, the three by 14 area is as close as we can get to the 50 and still be within compliance, so. In terms of, in terms of the warranty, Rick inquired about that, I can give you a very, very cliff's nose version of that. Watchfire, which is the manufacturer, there are two main manufacturers of these types of signs in the United States, Watchfire and another one called Daktronics. Believe it or not, Watchfire is headquartered, and these are built in Danville, Illinois. So they're an Illinois product, which is a pretty, pretty cool thing. They cover, they cover all components in the sign for five years. So all the parts inside that sign are covered for five years. We Benson Signs and Graphics, we warrant everything on, that we would provide, which in this case would be primarily our labor. We warrant that for a year. So just case in point, you know, in, let's say, three years down the road, maybe an LED board goes bad, which it, you know, they happen sometimes. You know, Watchfire is going to replace the board at no cost. The only additional cost you might have would be a little bit of labor for us to go up there in the boom truck and switch it out. That's a, that's, that's the long and the short of the warranty. And I'd certainly be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
So, and before you, I'd just like to add that this is gone before the, the foundation board, and the foundation board has agreed to cover the entire cost if this is the, of this proposal, this specific proposal. So one thing that, and Jason, this isn't fair to you, because you didn't hear this from me and I, in a timely fashion, and you're hearing it from the first time, came up when we talked in the finance meeting, and I've had a bunch of family stuff going on, and I haven't followed up, is that, so that, that picture, let's, I'm gonna pull it up again here. So right now, this tree is leafed out. So that's, you know, something we've got to, we've got to take a look at, and, you know, I, I don't know, we've talked to the city, is that something we can trim, or do, you know? But I don't know if any of the other committee members had a chance to take a look at it after that discussion, because I didn't. I think Samantha, it was you that, that pointed it out?
Yeah, because I was, yeah, I mean, I saw it again when I was there yesterday.
So Rick, you said, you said that the tree has, has sprouted leaves already?
Yes.
And, and is it, is it your belief that it would, the leaves, the tree's tall enough that the leaves would cover up the side?
That's, Samantha's the one who, who reported that to me, so.
Okay.
I will say, for some reason, I'm always in the far left lane, and I didn't specifically look, but I always noticed the sign, and it's not covered from the far left lane, but it may be covered from the right lane.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm always turning right there, so like I'm turning at that corner.
Yeah, it's, so we're, you know, it's not 100% from every angle, but there is, there are some places that it would be partially blocked is what it's, is, is what I'm hearing.
And I'm not, I, I'm not against that, but it, I mean, we do want people to be able to read it.
It's full disclosure, I, you know, I want everybody to know that what, you know, that that's, and we should take a look. And Jason, again, I apologize, this is the first he's heard of this, so that's not fair to, that's not fair to him.
Because it is great placement, I mean, it's a great, it's just a tree, it's just a tree.
I think it's, it's a good, I'm glad you brought it up. I would like to probably go down there and drive it myself, and, you know, it very easily could just be some simple trimming could, could take care of most of that, so.
Yeah.
But, but that, that tree is a city-owned tree, correct?
Right. As, as is the sign, you know, so, at the end of the day. So, you know, if, if you guys, I saw this as a, at least a three-step process. One, I had to get funding, that was, that's been completed. Two, this board has to approve it, because it's a, you know, it's a property issue. And then the, the, we are tenants, so the landlord would also have to approve it. Then there's probably some, there might be some kind of zoning, and Jason and his company would handle the permits, if they're even necessary, Greg, and I don't know, you, you're being, I wasn't required to get a permit when I rented the, the park, so, who knows? But.
Well, one, one thing I do recall, there was an issue a few years ago. The Civic Center sign that's at the corner of El Dorado and Franklin. And the Civic Center had been informed somehow, I'm, you know, perhaps by the city, I don't recall, that they were going to have to be forced to take that sign down, because there's something in city code that says, you know, you can only have such signage, you can only have a limited amount of signage, and there has to be distance from the signage. And at one time, there was a sign, a big billboard sign that was in the, on the north side of El Dorado, between the two buildings just on the other side of the street of the, of the Civic Center building. And, and, and so that, that became a conflict, but, but I don't recall the resolution, but that sign is no longer there, so the Civic Center was able to keep their sign. So maybe it's just something that we probably need to, you know, somebody needs to kind of look into to make sure that, you know, whatever that, that city code rule is, and make sure there's no other signs that would conflict.
Yeah, and I, and I have talked to Deputy City Manager Kinsit, and, and showed him the, the proposal, et cetera. Yeah, and although, you know, there are a couple other hurdles after this board, I just figured that no sense in sending it on to the city and doing that part if you guys want it. So the main thing, I wanted to get funding and then get you guys blessing, and then we'll take the next step, which is all the city approvals that we need to get.
I have another question. Okay, so I saw the material that you sent over, thank you for that. My recollection is, you know, the sign costs about $23,000, there's maybe some installation costs or something, so I don't know, it's somewhere less than 30, but the foundation would pay for all of that, everything that's on the invoice.
That's correct.
After that, what's the ongoing operation cost, which I assume the library would pay on an annual basis?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, and I think Jason has a, has a ready answer for that.
Nothing, no. I believe the operational cost on the message board, I believe, was right at a dollar a day, or maybe just under a dollar a day to run.
Oh, really?
And you're talking about electricity there, Jason?
I'm talking about power consumption, yes.
So, 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 and then there's the labor of, you know, keeping it up to date, keeping the messaging fresh, that sort of thing. And that's, you know, that's work, and, and, and we're, we've already got somebody in mind for it. But, yeah, I mean, there, there is a ca, a labor cost associated with it.
But it's already within the existing budget.
Exactly.
It's decided to somebody already I have on staff.
Right, there's no, there's no service agreement. You know, there's no, there's no ongoing service agreement, so.
Yeah, the, of course, because it's all LED, it's, it's extremely efficient. There's no additional communication cost, this communicates with a broadband connection. So anytime you have access to the internet, you can access the sign, but that's a lifetime service, and the broadband is included, so. Not a lot of, not a lot of additional costs.
So what, if it's, if it's broadband tied, is there, you know, can the, can the connection go down somehow? That, that something occurs, the connection goes down, I mean, and, and the signage just darkens out?
No, so the only time you could, so the communication just updates the information from the PC that you're operating in the office, and just downloads it to the controller that's inside the sign. Once, once that is done, your PC in the office can be turned off, because it retains the information in there. So the communication is just, just transferring information, once it's transferred, then the sign operates on its own. Fortunately, it's a, it's a, the broadband network that we're using is, is a Verizon network, is to the contract, that Watchfire has a contract with Verizon. And knock on wood, we've, we've not had the network go down ever in our experience so far. Now, I'd say it couldn't happen, but it is, I guess, to, I think, hopefully build some assurance. It is a, it's a, it's a national company like Broadband, or excuse me, Verizon that's supporting that broadband network.
Amy?
Any possibility that could be hacked?
Not that I'm aware of. It has to, it has to, all the communication has to go through your firewalls, so it's just accessing the internet. This communication on these types of signs used to be done via a radio communication and with banks and credit unions. That was always a real sticking point, because that radio was a point of entry that someone could hack into. And since we've had this broadband communication, our banking and our banking clients specifically have had, it's met all their security criteria, so.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Tompkins?
Hey, Jason?
Hmm?
Tell, tell Brad Underwood I could coach a little bit, if he's still looking for an assistant.
Seems he, seems he has a few openings. I wear, I wear the orange shirt just in case he calls, so, but. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the project, and I certainly hope that we can see it through to completion for you, so.
Sounds great, thank you so much.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you. So the question is, do we want to go ahead and make a motion to accept it? Or do we want to table it until we have more information about the, the tree line? That, it just makes me a little bit nervous, because obviously, we want it to be visible from Franklin Street, so.
Yeah, I would wait, I'm a no, if, I want to know, you know, if that, how, I mean, what if they let the tree keep getting taller, I mean, I don't know. You know, I mean, we should know if we could trim the tree, can they take the tree out? You know. Can everybody look at it between now and next month? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and, so, or request a motion to table the Benson Sign proposal for the month?
I so moved.
Okay.
I second.
All right, so we'll go, any other discussion? Okay, so we'll start with Amy.
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And Samantha, yes. Okay, so we will table that for the month, so please go look at it, and Rick, you'll take that action back to the city. See, see what we can do if there's.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, we can talk about, maybe Greg, you can point me to talk to about the, the tree, you know.
All right, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
It, it, maybe we can have a conversation about who I should talk to about.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Very good.
So we'll move on to the city librarians report, Rick?
Yeah, it just, it just came to my attention that, although I have it, I don't, I didn't send it to you guys. I sent everything out a week early, felt great, but let me share it with you. I didn't send it to you, so. Okay, so we've got the division heads here, so I'm not going to talk too much about, but we don't have a Carol or Alyssa, but I think we've got everybody else. In admin, Betty Jo, who y'all know, and Michelle, y'all know now, they're continuing to really review and refine our administrative processes and procedures under Robert's direction, and that's, that's proceeding really, really well. I think that they're working as a great team, and I'm really happy with the way things are going there. I'm continuing to work in the Director's University Planning Committee, that will again be all virtual this year. Usually, it's a one-week intensive training in Springfield. Let's see, Samantha and I met with Ed Culp, newly elected city councilman. I told him that you said hi, Amy, first time I've ever given a tour to somebody with a sidearm.
Yeah, I did notice that.
He was taking a break, he teaches at the, at the Police Academy. I thought we had a, I thought we had a very good first meeting. I'll let Robert talk to you about CIRC, and as far as tech CIRC, it's, it's basically, you know, they are, you know, we're trying to, we're sort of categorizing, sometimes, you know, Carol comes on, she says, well, I, you know, I don't really have a lot of flashy stuff to talk about, but you know what? It's good when technical services is, is, is boring to talk about, it means they're doing what they're supposed to do. They're a maintenance department, they maintain things, and they, they, when we, it's like a, it's like a good referee, you, you know they're good because you don't notice them, and they continue to do a fantastic job. PRS, we're still working with the opioid, Crossings Opioid Recovery Center, partnering with them, you know, helping support them in, for their family services with, by providing books, and we're talking about perhaps starting a book club. See, we're working on bringing Paw Print Ministries back in, we've got a plan to keep everybody safe, and hopefully, we'll be doing that over the summer. I think that's, I'm, I'm going to move on from there, and systems in, in archives and special collections, we'll let Matt and Becky talk about, and I do want to show you some numbers, though. So you guys have, have asked me to look at the last three years, which makes perfect sense, rather than, rather than just look at, usually, we just compare to last year, same time. So this is what our, our circulation looked like in, in April of 2021, 2020, and 2019. Again, if we just compared it to 2020, it looks pretty darn fantastic, but you know, we were closed. All you're seeing in 2020 is.
We're not seeing that screen, if you're.
You're not seeing it?
We're still. I'm just seeing the Decatur, I'm just seeing the library's report, I'm not seeing the one with the numbers.
Okay, uh, let me stop and start over again, and maybe that'll do it.
Sorry, I thought.
Sorry. Yes.
Okay, all right. So April 2021, this is total CIRC, compared to total CIRC last year, but all we're looking at there is electronic CIRCs and renewals, and then, but this is 2019. All things considered, I'm, I'm not too disappointed with that. Here it is, as a, as a percentage change, you know, we're, these are gaudy numbers, you know, children's materials up 274%. Well, it's to be expected. So this is the, our 2019 actuals, and our 2020 total, and then our 2021 projection. I don't have a good model for the projection for this year, because there's never been a year quite like it, partially shut down, partially open. And I believe that these will come up as the year progresses. I don't think we're going to hit this number, 316,000, but I don't think we're going to end up at 183,000 either. So the change right now that we're projecting is about a 3% drop, and I don't think that's going to hold. Now, here's our 12-month rolling trend, so this is the, over on the right, this is the last 12 months, the 12 months preceding, and the 12 months preceding that. The purple is the total circulation, so you could see, it's been a, it's been a steady decline, and then a really, really dramatic decline due to COVID. And the numbers are, you know, this is the percentage change, they're all below zero. These are the same total numbers, but we break it down by material type. Biggest declines that we're seeing are in books, as far as number goes on actual books. The biggest gains are in electronic materials.
Have to say, the electronic selection is a lot better.
It is, it is, and, and people are more inclined to use it now, people have, we're forced into using it, but we're looking at from 2019, a 45% increase in electronic materials, but a decrease in everything else. As far as percentage, a huge drop in videos, 54% decline, because you can, most people, I shouldn't say most, more people have access to streaming. We're looking at a projected change, again, as a, as an increase in electronic, a decrease in everything else. 12-month rolling trend by material type. Everything's on the way down, except for electronic materials. And the change in trend, this other positive number, large positive number, is in other items loan, physical items loan, and that is basically one thing, and that's hotspots. And it's not a, the raw number isn't significant, it's just that we have, we didn't have that kind of stuff to, to CIRC before, so. That increase in electronic materials isn't covering the gap, okay? It's not, it's not covering the gap. Now, I used to tell you guys, we're stuck at 10 to 12%. Every month, electronic circulation represents 10 to 12% of our total circulation. Now it's over 20%, but that's due to two things, an increase in the, the number of electronic materials accessed, and a decrease in everything else. When we look at it as a percentage of the total, it's much, much higher. It's not, when you look at raw numbers, it's not that much higher, it's a couple thousand more a month or less. So happy to answer any questions, if not, can turn it over to the division heads.
I do have a question.
Yep.
So the 2019 data, of course, is normal operations.
Right.
Normal hours of service, normal patron access. 2020 was the same for the first three months of the year, and then the pandemic happened. Describe 2021, is, are we, from January to the present, is it normal hours of operation? Is it normal access of patrons, or something else?
Right now, it is, it's normal hours of operation, hasn't been all year, but it is now. Access is only limited, it's self-limited, you know, I, I believe there are still people that, you know, are uncomfortable to come to a public place and, and, and brown, maybe some people don't want to wear a mask, but there, you know, still is a city ordinance requiring masks. But what, let me just give you another number, Greg.
Hey, Rick, I gotta step in, because I gotta step out.
Okay.
Rick that, but I gotta, I gotta go, guys.
Okay, thanks, Michael.
Okay, bye-bye.
So this, this number might be more telling. April of this year, we had about 8,000 people through the door. April of 2019, we had 18,000 people through the door.
Really?
Yeah, so that's huge.
Right.
It's, that's a huge, huge decline.
So, so do you think, do you, it's, it's that it's people, just still the lingering effects of the pandemic, are people are reluctant to come into the library? I mean, obviously, electronic, electronic materials are up, so people perhaps are still accessing.
I, I, you know, without, you know, doing some sort of survey, I can't say this with any certainty, but I can tell you that when I, my colleagues around the state, we're all wondering that. You know, and I have to believe that, that the answer to your question is yes, it is still lingering effects of COVID. I think the next six or eight months are going to tell us a lot.
Okay. Any other questions for Rick? Okay, then we move on to division head reports. Robert? You're on mute.
I'm on mute, okay. Yeah, I will just pick up, you know, Rick was talking about circulation, which a lot of those numbers I have to deal with every day. And we are, you know, May was our worst, and at least probably since we've been in this building, May of 2020. And since then, we've, it's been a steady rise back to, hopefully at some point where we're at, but you know, it won't be where we were, I don't feel. Because a good story I just had, there was a guy came into the library, I said, "Rick already gave you all the numbers, I'll give you a story." There was a guy came into the library earlier this week, and the staff was concerned, because he would come in, check out some things, come in, check out some things, and then he, you know, he would, he would return them. So I went over and I talked to him, because he was putting things back on the shelf incorrectly, and we had a conversation. And it turns out that he couldn't get Wi-Fi, so he was coming to the library to get the Wi-Fi and to check out CDs, and he was, he told me, he said, "Well, I'm burning them." I said, "Don't tell me that, I don't want to hear it. That's illegal, by the way." And he says, "Well, you know, I can't get Wi-Fi," so I took him over, and I showed him the hotspot. And the other thing, you know, we were, he's getting all of these CDs, but you know, I talked to him about Spotify, and he didn't really, you know, have the, know the concept, so I said, "You know, we're going to have some classes on some of this thing, this stuff." But my point I'm getting at is that, you know, as technology starts to, you know, become more familiar with some people, and that digital divide, we start working on that digital divide at the library, we'll find some of these things, the CIRC is going to go down, for like, our CDs. So you figure this guy's got, you know, he checked out probably 30 CDs with Spotify, with the technology, using our online resources, it's going to be maybe no CDs from this, from this guy. So as things start to change, and as the library technology starts to be more prevalent in our community, you know, we're going to find our services, our circulation services changing, you know, quite a bit. What we do for circulation changing, you know, the pages, and Rick's talked about this before, not maybe spending so much time putting the books back on the shelves, but maybe finding a way to repurpose and to, like, talk to these people and say, "Okay, you know, let's sit down and introduce you to Spotify or some of our other library resources." So we see some changes, you know, the numbers are what the numbers are, you know, they tell what's been checked out. And if you look at some of the numbers also, you'll see that we have that core set of patrons who, from year to year, you know, like, as things have got back to normal, we still have about 1,400 people that are going to come in and check out about 14,000 books a month. And so, you know, and of Decatur patrons, the Decatur patrons that come in, they're going to check out 12,000 of those books a month. So we have a faithful, you know, faithful group of core library users, and, you know, for the circulation part, that's a good thing. But I can see, as we go further, you know, our jobs and our responsibilities and our, you know, it's going to change. And I know Greg has talked in the, in the future about, you know, in the past about, you know, how's our counter going to look? And our counter is going to look different. Right now, it looks different. If you come in after 6 o'clock, it looks different. We have maybe one or two people up there, and the rest are working out in the, in the stacks, or they're working with the AMH. So, you know, that's kind of the circulation report. We, we had some training last week with some of the staff, and we did some reaching for Illinois. We also had, I think, Michelle and Betty Jo and I, we did a job description training with HR Source. I sat in on a really great meeting with E-Rail's Assistant Directors, and we talked about all things in common for Assistant Directors. It was a really good meeting. You know, one thing that came out is that, you know, the, the library patronage, the, it's changed, the way things are now for libraries has changed, but it's, we're still very much needed.
Absolutely.
Hey, Robert, so, I mean, obviously, what I'm about to ask is premature. But, but, you know, as you were talking, what I was thinking is that, you know, library access, library patronage, or, you know, attendance at the library is going to change going forward, maybe as a result of COVID, that people who didn't have access before, or didn't really want to use electronic services, maybe are, have learned to use them, and will transition to that. And it's probably, obviously, at this point, premature to understand what the longer range impacts will be. But this is something that will play out over the next year, two years, to really understand what the dynamic change is as a result of the pandemic.
Yeah, that's, that's totally, you know, true. I mean, you know, and I think Rick was very accurate, and I've heard him say it before, you know, is there's, you know, as I look at the numbers all the time, and I don't see how you could forecast for this 2021 going forward. You know, only, the only thing that I can see is, looking back to May, is that there's a steady increase. You know, it looked like we're keep sloping upward, which is a good thing, you know, but another thing is that, you know, working with this gentleman today, it also impressed upon me a couple things. Number one, how important it is, you know, Carol, I want to pull a plug in for her, is that, and I say it all the time, the reason we can find what we can find is because they do such a great job in tech services, because they put the information in the, in the system. And the other thing is that, you know, is, I spent, oh, probably an hour, a half hour with this guy, unintentional, I didn't plan to, is that we're going to have to, you know, start to plan, to spend more time planning for programs, and I know that's not talked about probably enough for Alyssa's group, is that it takes a lot of time to put together planning, even though you're not, you know, doing your traditional library-type work, but there's a lot of planning that goes into the programs and working out. So, you know, the average patron that comes in and sits in, they can understand what you're talking about, so you can make it, you know, presentable, so.
Yeah, I think, Greg, if I had to prognosticate, I would say what you're saying is going to be absolutely true, where things like music, movies, and audiobooks are concerned, I'm not so sure about book books. E-books have kind of, they passed, about 10 years ago, in sales, they passed print books, but that's, they've, since switched, print books now outsell ebooks, and it's, it's millennials and Generation Z that express a stronger preference for, for print materials over, over electronic books. About long-form books here only, you know, not talking about movies and that kind of stuff. Everybody who can will transition from discs to streaming. I mean, I think-
So are you saying that the younger generation, the millennials, are a higher influence, are higher practice of checking out books than previous?
When, when surveyed, this is a Pew study that came out a few years ago, when surveyed, they expressed the strongest preference out of any age group for print over-
Really?
I'm a print, I'm a print girl.
My kids prefer print, as well. I mean, my kids still listen to audiobooks, but the problem with all the audiobooks, because I listen to audiobooks, and I have an Audible subscription, which I can get three books a month, but from the library, I use the library as well a lot, but I can't get any of the new, good books. If I want a new, good book, I'm going to have to go and get a print book from the library, which I think is totally fine, because that encourages people to go to the library and pick up a print book.
Hey Greg, I attended a, it was a, it's been a few years ago, I attended a session up in, I think it was up in Chicago, and it was the Dean of Commons up there, and he was, they had a, they have a, at this college, I think it was Xavier, maybe, they have a really great Commons room, and he said that the thing that the students really like, they like quiet study, and they like print, they like print books. He said, you know, they want the print. They get the digital, they can get that anytime, but they really do like the print books.
Well, that's, that's good.
I, yeah.
From my point of view, that's good.
I mean, like, I used all my hoopla subscription this month, because I was, I was listening to audiobooks.
Yeah, it's, it's, we're, it's all going to, I believe it's all going to go streaming eventually, for, for anything that's, that's sound, or, or, or audio or video. I think that's-
Yeah, I'm, I'm there.
It's, that, that battle's all over, but the shouting, it, but for print, I, I-
I think this generation also, like my kids' generation, is more apt to want to read a book and then get rid of it. So that's where our library is more advantageous, because my kids, at the end of the school year, can't wait to sell their books back. And it's, I, I remember keeping my books when I was their age, not necessarily selling them back, and I don't know whether that's because it's easier to sell them back, but I know that they'll all, they love taking a book out and then getting rid of it. So that's where libraries are good.
And children's picture books, I mean, there, you can't, it's not even remotely the same. Like, I mean, having a picture book, an ebook, because they make them, they make ebooks for children, but I, I've never once shown my two-and-a-half-year-old an ebook copy, like, so, I mean, I, hopefully not. There's just something about it. All right, any other questions for Robert? And we'll move on to Becky.
Hi. So I have some good news. We had a program on May 11th, virtual, Gary Geisler and Dr. Stephen Haas, and we had 56 people, which I think might be the top for, I mean, it's the top for ASC, but I'm not sure if it's the top for the whole-
It's great for in-person.
Yeah, 56 people, for the whole hour, not just like, "Oh, I'm going to come in for five minutes and leave," but the whole hour they stayed. In fact, we went over a little bit, because-
I saw it on YouTube, so I am going to watch it. I just haven't watched it yet.
Everything, everyone that we do is, is recorded and put on YouTube, if not the next day, then the day after. We get it up, and then we post it out on Facebook, so people can see it. So if you missed it, you can catch it. We're recording every single one. The board minutes up to April 2021 are on Omega. They are done. Oh, the website ever goes down, we have a backup. Well, we have a backup anyway, because Matt has everything, but all of our historical stuff, it's all out there, you can see it, everything's done. I finished the glass negatives from the Charles Watson collection yesterday on Omega. Those are all done. 1,300 negatives scanned and put out there individually. They're all out there now, so people can see them. Because the board minutes were done, Leanne needs another project, so we are actually, and this is not why I'm doing this, but we are going to start scanning our smaller done collections, our finding aids, and putting those on Omega as well. So we're going to start with one small one, it's about just a box, it's a half linear foot, and see how quickly we can get these things out there, because that way, more people have access to our materials, they can see them. The, the goal is to eventually have as many of these collections out there as possible, because access is fantastic, it's also good for preservation, less touchy. So if we ever shut down again, people can still use the material.
Rick just threw up the Omega in the chat.
Yeah, and then, last but not least, we are back to open regular hours, except for Saturdays. Saturdays are appointment only, and we're doing just fine. We don't have the traffic we would like to, but it's been kind of nice out, so, you know, we'll probably see the traffic back when we get into fall.
Sure. Thanks, Becky. Any questions? All right, then we'll move to Matt.
Hello, everybody. News for me, not a whole lot. We moved from a Sofis antivirus to Bitdefender. We signed up for three years, so that lowers the cost over those three years. Chris and Joy Harvey at Richland have figured out the connection problems that we were having, and it's been smooth sailing for that so far. We're still working on doing a lot of Windows updates and Dale Driver updates. It's caused some problems with our patron computers that we're trying to figure out right now. That's it.
All right, thank you. Excellent. All right, well, the one other thing is for PRS is the summer reading program's coming up here, and I know Alyssa's not here, but signup starts on June 1st. So just take a look at the website, I'm assuming, and-
I'll get, I'll put that in chat.
Okay. So I'll let you guys go, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So then we'll move on to reports of committee. Since Michael's not here, I'll go ahead and do the report for PPPR. Personnel update, oh, we didn't have anything to-
Hey, that's in the report.
We've been so busy, so then we'll move on to the sexual harassment and retaliation policy, workplace discrimination, harassment, violence, and retaliation policy. Those are combined.
Yeah, let me, Chris actually, he, he kind of recommended that we put it in the form of a resolution, so let me show you what, what you came up with here, Chris Sedilla, that is, our attorney. So basically, what it says is that we want to update and consolidate more than one policy governing harassment and sexual harassment, that we want to do, we want a new policy that's going to supersede the old ones. He wanted us to pass this resolution to Exhibit A, adopt Exhibit A, that the, this is, also, the other goal was to put it, get it in line with the City of Decatur's policy. So we reflected the language quite a bit, but made it library-specific and library-appropriate. This has been vetted by the committee and by, and our attorney drafted it, so.
So, I mean, and someone can decide to make the motion if they want. The, the recommendation now is to adopt the resolution to combine the policies, and then to adopt the, adopt the the policy, the workplace.
Yeah, if you, if you simply motion, move to pass this resolution, that adopts the policy, so that was, that was Chris's recommendation, so.
Okay, well.
I'll move to pass this resolution.
Thank you, Susan.
I'll second.
Thanks, Kate. Any discussion? All right, so let's go down the list. So Amy?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Samantha, yes. Right, so the resolution's been passed.
And we'll need signatures eventually from Samantha and Sophia on this.
Yeah, I'll be in there next Wednesday. And we'll move on to the meeting room policy. So that one. Sorry, do you have it up, or can you bring it up?
Yeah, I can bring it up. Everything's moving a little slow. I'm printing that resolution now, so that you can have it. There was only one change in the, there was only one change in the, in the meeting room policy. And that was, we took out reference to individuals. There was some confusing language in there that seemed to indicate that individuals could, could rent the room. Here's, I was asked by the committee to reach out to some of our neighbors and see, our neighboring libraries, and see what they do, because we were told that, well, we get to do it at-
Such and such library.
Barclay and whatever. Well, I talked to our neighbor library directors, and they all told me that they don't do that. And now, the, the one possible exception is Barclay. She took over right after COVID hit, so she said, "Well, I mean-" I mean, our policy says we don't do that, but I know I don't know whether they did it in practice. She said, it's been closed the time I've been here. So uh, and her one of her goals is to is to get practice and policy in line. So the only thing we did was we removed some language from this um first first paragraph that referred to use by individuals. Not to say we can't go back later and and decide to let individuals uh rent the room. Uh, but that's, it was it was very confusing language, so we just wanted it to be consistent.
Yes. Someone want to make a motion to accept the changes as presented? So Carl, did you move?
Yeah.
Okay, that's somebody else second it.
I'll second.
All right, Kate, thanks. Um, so we'll go down the list. So Amy.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Sophia.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Samantha, yes. So the changes to the meeting room policy have been accepted, and then we'll move on to the software use policy. Sorry.
So we uh, came to my attention a couple of months ago that that we had a a software use policy that uh hadn't, you know, had been had become dormant. Uh, every every staff member was supposed to sign off on it. Uh, I didn't see it. I've been here since twenty fourteen. I didn't see it till a couple of months ago. It was a very lengthy policy, many pages long. It it it, uh, you know, it attempted to name every piece of software that was okay, and every piece of software that wasn't. You know, it was I it I it was a good policy for the time. Uh, it's not it's not a good policy for now. Uh, didn't referred to floppy disks and so uh, so Matt and I kind of batted it around for a while, and we tried to just rewrite what we had, and we finally threw it out and just came up with something new. He threw a one-page policy at me. We worked it a bit, but he's happy with this. And he's kind of the main guy in charge. What it essentially says is, you know, don't don't download anything to the Decatur Public Library computer without going through the systems administrator, you know, even if it's freeware, shareware, or a font. You know.
So you guys are aware, this is only for staff, so staff will sign this.
Yes.
So, um, we can take questions, but does somebody want to make a motion to accept this software use policy?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Thank you, Sophia. Need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Susan. All right, is there any discussion on it? Questions?
I mean, I just, I I agree with Rick. I mean, back in the day, there was very different very different things going on with like the floppy disks. You could pirate software. You can't do any of that stuff right now. And I like the idea of saying you can't download anything, including fonts, without permission.
Yeah.
So I think I think it's it's nice and concise and short, and that's kind of what you need right now.
Yep. All right.
I I would say as well for the Personnel Policy and Public Relations Committee, my view is, when they bring an action forward, they vetted it. They've reviewed it, and they're recommend recommending to the board that it be approved. And so from my point of view, not as a member of that committee, but as a board member, then I support their action.
Well, I agree, but you also have the say in it as well. So I just want to at least offer it for who wasn't at the committee meeting. So. Um, all right, so we'll go ahead and take a vote. So Amy.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Sophia.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Carl. Carl, you're on mute.
Yes.
And Susan.
Yes.
Samantha, yes. All right, so um, software use policy is accepted. Uh, the Board of Trustees bylaws. We've been going through them um for months, since like February, I think. Um, and so we feel these are reflective of what we want to see um in the policy. And the main change to the the policy is that, at least that affects you directly, is that once a year, should be one, once maybe twice a year for the lucky person, a representative of the board would go to a Friends meeting. So and we will basically, I'll set the schedule, um, and then if you can't make it, then you would let me know. So these are, this is the the bylaws. I'm not sure. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to take a look at them. I know the PPPR committee has. So if anybody wants to make a motion to accept the new bylaws.
And this, uh, just for for uh purposes, I I didn't note, did we say, uh, Samantha, that this would be the PPPR chair?
Yes.
We did put some, we did put some language in there about, you know, the the responsibility for the director's evaluation. I'm gonna change this to City Librarian also, because that's Executive Director is not my title.
Correct.
Well, I I had a question about where you're at right now. What what did this yellow highlighted comment mean?
Yeah, I I just had a question. I had a question for the committee about uh, who was going to be responsible for this. And uh, that's what I highlighted it to remind me to ask.
Okay, okay. So it's so what this is really referring to is the Secretary of the Board.
Now, we're gonna change. It's gonna be the PPPR chair, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So so what we're saying is the PPR C Chair is responsible for distribution, tabulation of forms related to the City Librarians' annual performance evaluation.
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay.
But just to clarify, though, that's not the only change from the existing.
No, this is entirely new.
It's entirely new.
Yeah, the it's the the content is.
I would say substantially, it's pretty similar to what we're doing. It's just kind of put it into a format that's more accessible to us and then to, you know, members of the public, the way we manage.
We had, okay, so substantially. So substantially, there's no real changes to the bylaws.
The only change is what I had said, the the main change that affects you guys would be the committee, like, attending one of the Friends meetings.
Okay, 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 all right.
Everything else, everything else is simply uh adding clarification where we thought the language was really, really fuzzy uh about the about the annual meeting primarily, and uh, committee assignments gave more wiggle room for the 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 Board President.
Okay.
So it, but the substance is is much the same. You will still operate in the same way. Uh, we just, there were some things that we sometimes refer to and go, that could be interpreted to mean this, so we just kind of tightened up the language.
I mean, sorry to ask, but you you said wiggle room? What's the wiggle room for the?
So the wiggle room was, it would it would allow the Board President to uh decide, uh, hey, uh, everybody's gonna take a turn at being the Friends liaison, rather than, the old language was, they'll assign one person to be the liaison for the next.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Okay, okay, all right.
It's a lot, considering that we already have two meetings in mind, so.
Yes.
And it gets people to know about the Friends, because they're a big part of our our library. So so does somebody want to make a motion to accept the bylaws as presented?
Absolutely.
All right, Carl.
I'll second.
Susan. All right, so any other discussion, questions? All right, Amy.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Sophia.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
And Samantha, yes. Uh, we have new bylaws. That's bylaws have passed, so that's great. And.
Congratulations.
That was a lot. That was a lot of work, so.
Yeah, you know.
Kate, Kate and Rick, great job. Um, so we'll move on to the DEI, the DEI discussion. Robert, have we sent, I I know you were out a little bit. Have we sent out the RFIs yet?
No, I am working on the RFI fast and furious, even now, as this meeting is going on. So I'm uh, we have, uh, you know, I think I've gotten all the input. I I spoke with uh, someone I spoke with at the beginning of the process recently. Actually, I emailed him, and Bruce sent me uh three more names. Uh, to contact Stacy Young. Um, you all probably remember Paula, that was on our board, Paula Hen Henkel.
Henkel, yes, yes, yes.
Paula Henkel, yes, that was on the board. And uh, Nick, uh, Nikki, I forgot the last name. So uh, I'm also gonna be reaching out to them, and Eric from McKinney from Millikan University, and I've talked with the the Boys and Girls Club. So they will just get uh sort of a, just sort of looking at coming in, sitting on the in on the meetings and giving input. Uh, so when I finish the um RFIs, what we'll do is we'll basically give them the information too, so they'll know where we're at. So, you know, we have at least one member, maybe two members that may not be able to carry on. So we want to make sure we have enough people that are involved in the process, you know, of choosing the consultants. And it sounds like, you know, now we're also, we're gonna have some people who may be have some experience with some of this, you know, choosing consultants and working with professionals. So um, basically, you know, we'll get the RFI out uh this week. I'm taking a final look at it. Um, the first two will probably uh go out to uh Maggie Cousins, uh, who is with the Library Strategies. And um, also, we'll, of course, like I said, we'll send copies out to the to the committee. And the other one will probably be uh this sort of a reminder to Glory, I mean Christina Fuller, who gave us the three-month proposal. Uh, so and then the rest will go to the other groups. So wanted to make sure all the language was correct, um, and however, just give it another look over. Uh, it's not a proposal, it's just for information, and it's not asking for a formal uh proposal. It's just basically asking for um sort of an informal, um, you know, tell us what you can do for us sort of thing. So uh, if any of the board are interested, I can also send you a copy of that. You know, you can, so let us, we can let you know what we're sending out. But that's kind of where we're at now. Um, and also uh emailing, still emailing the the corporations, kind of looking at what their um what their policies say about, you know, uh, DEI as far as diversity. The person who I'm emailing um today is uh Kendall Briscoe. We've worked with her at Caterpillar um before. She's actually did some stuff for us when we did our our tax sessions last year. So um, anyway, it's it's kind of where we're at, and the the hope is that we'll have some responses back before the thirty first and hopefully have some introductions starting up at the first of June. So.
Okay, great. Thanks, Robert. So, um, I think my only other discussion, maybe we could put in new business would should be going back to meetings in person. It's the only other thing we talked about.
I mean, I've got, we we could talk about under that meetings heading under new business, uh, you know, as meetings in.
Maybe I have a different copy. I did just.
Programs and meetings uh is uh is under new business and COVID protocols on the.
Not on my copy that I got, or maybe I got a different copy and I sent it to.
Yeah, I sent about Monday or so. I sent a an amended, an amended agenda out.
That's probably why. Sorry about that.
Yeah, let me, here, I can.
I have it. I just don't have it on my other one. Okay. I see it now. Okay, go ahead. We can go ahead into Finance and Properties.
Okay, we met last week, um, and it was um very much typically routine discussion. We discuss the check register, um, the April check register, and recommend it to the board for approval.
I second it.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? All right, Amy.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Sophia.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Samantha, yes.
Um, we then looked at Rick's ongoing projections, and I do, you know, that's a great, this is a great system, so that we always see where we are versus budget for the current year, and then also look at Rick's best going forward recommendations and um everything, there aren't any, there aren't any red flags. Everything looks as normal. We may do slightly better than budget, but it is uh, we're still pretty early in the year. Um, so that was a discussion item. Then we we've already discussed the Benson signs. I I guess we're not going back to that. And then the final item, which we just began the discussion, was the Building Committee. So there are kind of two big things on that. One is the landscaping and Greg's progress, or the city's progress in dealing with trying to get the landscaping in better shape. And then the second thing, would anything that Rick wants to tell us about uh the discussions about the future of the building?
Yeah, building, creating, we just had, we met for the first time in a long time. We 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 had a couple of things. We we wanted the uh the architects to tweak, and uh, I I gotta get back in touch with them, because I I had our architects, I had a discussion with them um probably three weeks ago, at least now, maybe more, and I and I haven't gotten a a tweaked or plan yet. So I'll reach out to them again and see see what they have, at which at which time I would like to reconvene the Building Committee and and then eventually, and I'm hoping by July, uh, that I I I will have met individually or two at a time with all of you guys, to sort of, let's, here's, here's what we've got, and here's why we think it's a good idea. And then we can bring it formally before the board.
Hey, Rick, can can you just refresh refresh us? Um, what's the purpose of the Building Committee? And 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 what is the Building Committee reviewing at present?
Yeah.
To bring before the board?
So we formed the Building Committee. Uh, it it it's a sort of a an offshoot from our our strategic plan. So strategic plan wanted us to review the space. Uh, and actually called for some specific changes, uh, but but wanted us to review the space, to look for of use, efficiency of use. Uh, and so we reached out. This was as a result of focus groups, as a result of uh, uh, an all-day session uh of of stakeholders and surveys of staff and the public. So we got several, first of all, the the staff did a lot of a lot of work on it. Okay, we came up with things that we thought needed to be looked at. Uh, then we formed the Building Committee, and that consists of a couple of you guys, and Samantha and Sophia. Uh, two folks from the Foundation Board, from the Friends Board, and Deputy City Manager Kinsit uh to represent the, as it, since it is a city property.
Right.
Uh, to to be the representative. So uh, we kind of stalled for a long time, because honestly, because we were trying to tell the architects where to put stuff. And uh, when we decided to take a different approach, what which was this, what is it we want to achieve? What do we want to do? What do we, what is it the the library wants to do and do better? And we and we just told them, here's what we want. You tell us where to put stuff. That's where we we felt that we made some progress. So they came back with some recommendations, and COVID hit. So we put everything on on hold. There is, and there were some other bumps in the road along the way, but that's the that's the thumbnail uh thumbnail sketch. We decided to go ahead and talk again, because we, you know, the uh you know, COVID hopefully is coming to an end, but. you know, COVID hopefully is coming to an end, but also because, uh, you know, the friends, uh, you know, uh, may have to vacate their space sooner or later.
What's the end game? Of the building committee?
To have a, to have a remodeling plan and then.
Okay, okay.
Said plan and have it approved also by, uh, the landlords.
Okay.
Raise the money to pay for it.
Okay, okay, all right, okay.
Very important.
Right.
Pam.
You know, it, and that's the thing about, you know, a capital campaign, if we, you know, I, I'm, I'm going to strongly recommend to the, the, the foundation because they'll be spearheading any capital campaign, yeah, I, that they hire, uh, a consultant, and the consultant will do a feasibility study, and they'll either come back and say.
Okay.
We can get this done, or they'll say, there's no way you're gonna be able to raise this kind of money, you need to scale it back. Or, you need to retrench, you know, and we'll figure out where we go from there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion, Matt? So we'll move on to foundation, um, we had foundation meeting on the twenty ninth. Uh, I did just notice that the committee is saying November on the agenda.
Yeah, I, it actually, Michelle fixed that for me, but I didn't, I think I should send you another, uh, amended agenda.
I mean, apparently, I just.
An hour after I sent that one, so it is on the, uh, on the official copy, it is fixed.
Okay, um, so we had an election of officers, the same officers, um, are the same. Uh, so it's Tina Zindel McWilliams is the, still the board president, and then, I don't, I don't remember, well, I don't remember the exact, sorry, I don't have my notes. Who is it? Who's the vice president?
Uh, Mark.
Mark, and then Carol, yeah.
Oh, okay. So, so Mark Sorenson is Vice President of the Foundation.
Correct.
Okay, good, good, okay.
Uh, so we had the building committee, same building committee report that, um, we just had. We discussed the LED sign proposal and then voted to send it to us for the, for action. And just talked about the capital campaign consultant that Rick just mentioned. Um, I think that was mainly it.
Yep, eighteen thousand, I think, was, uh, where we were for last year's, uh.
Annual.
Yeah, we're still getting, uh, donations that say for the, you know, annual appeal that we sent out in November.
So, so is the foundation raising a lot of money, or?
Uh, I would, depends on, depends on your definition of a lot, not, 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 not in terms of a, of a capital campaign of the size that we'll be talking about, no. But, uh, but a lot more than they were seven years ago. I mean, you know, uh, just by sending out a letter every year, they weren't doing no active funding.
Yeah, yeah. So, so is it they're kind of getting hundred dollars, they're sending letters out and getting hundred dollar checks? It's.
I, yeah, and some, some more substantial than that.
Okay.
I think something like an LED sign out there that you can, say we did that, helps next year.
Okay, 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 okay.
So, then we'll move to the friends of the library.
I, I was unable to attend, uh, uh, due to my, my mother's illness. Uh, they, they approved all the, everything we asked for, uh, I know that much, but I was unable to attend.
All right, the IHLS. Did you have anything for that?
Yeah, uh, that we are voting on, I've told you guys, you know, here and there, uh, sorry, somebody messaged me. Uh, I, I've told you guys here and there about a, so, uh, an app, uh, called, that the, that IHLS was, was actually share, which is a subset of IHLS, uh, going to adapt for all libraries, and, uh, it is now being voted on by membership. So we're talking about four hundred and fifty-some odd libraries. We, it always takes a while to get a, a quorum to vote, uh, when you're talking about that many libraries. So, uh, voting's been open for a week and we haven't achieved quorum yet. So, uh, I, I, I think it's gonna pass, and I think it's gonna pass, uh, pretty easily once we get that. But, uh, and it, it, it'll be very little cost to, uh, the individual libraries. And now there will be bells and whistles that we can add to it and an additional cost, but, uh, uh, it'll be, for a hundred dollars, we'll be able to, if you look at this, this month's, uh, check register, you'll see something called Fix Stat. That's, that's the My Libro app, we'll be able to replace it, we, we won't have to get that next year. Because those will do what, what it does. So, it's gonna cost a hundred dollars and we won't have to spend that three thousand dollar worth, for that one aspect of it alone. It's gonna be to the Gator Public Library, but there's a lot more things it can do, and I'm, I'm, I'm very happy about, uh, oh, Robert says we did get a quorum, so, uh, excellent, so.
That's awesome.
Yep. So the implementation will begin on July one, great, fantastic, thanks for letting me know that, Robert.
Awesome. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, then move on to old business, our good old chestnut here, board openings. And I've been working on it, I mean, this month I talked to two people, um, they both said no. And then we also suggested someone else, and then the mayor said no, and so we're just, we're, we keep trying. I, so if anyone has any recommendations, please let me know.
Hey, Samantha.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I mean, choose to answer if you want, but the two people that said no, did they have reasons for saying no?
Um, I think it was just a scheduling issue, I mean, this is a board that does require time, so thank you for all of your time, everyone.
Why did the mayor say no?
A conflict of interest. So, we were hoping, but, so, if anybody has any friends or, you know, just think of people that can.
So, give us a flavor, um, I mean, right, we have nine board members, right now, how many do we have? Michael and I are scheduled to roll off June thirtieth, so give us the numbers right now, so we know where we're at.
We have eight right now, and then minus you two would be seven, or.
Six.
Six.
Six, six is required for a quorum.
Five is required for a quorum.
Okay, okay, okay.
Well, a quorum is defined by a majority of the currently serving board members.
Okay, all right.
Law says we have to have nine, but we can operate, you know, it, uh, we can operate if there were three of you.
You could operate with two.
Then we could, as long as two showed up, we would have a quorum. So, uh, quorum is legal, the, the legal definition and, you know, uh, for, at least for library boards, is that it's a, it's a majority of the currently seated board members.
Okay.
Okay, so, so, so the short answer is, um, even if we don't get the full seats, the board can still operate because there will be enough quorum at any meeting, provided that people show up.
And yet, that's a good question for Kate, and I, I know Kate, I'm putting you on the spot, I don't know, you, you, I'm sure you know, uh, the Illinois state, uh, the statutes backwards and forwards by heart, uh.
Yeah, all of them.
But my, I still think, I mean, it still says you have to have nine people. Uh, so, I mean, I, I think you can get away with it for a while, but I mean, at some point, somebody's gonna, are, is this a legally operating library? You're supposed to have nine board members, you're supposed to have nine trustees.
I don't remember the last time we had nine trustees.
It's been a while, and I know, and my understanding is we're not, we're not alone in, uh, indicator of, of difficulties filling board seats.
Susan?
I have an idea for someone, um, I'm just not sure, it's, um, Angel Lawrence, and she is the Executive Director of Northeast Community Fund. And, um, fair, but the, the thing is, is I would need to talk to her, I, she has not even been there a year, but she is doing a fantastic job and is, I don't know, I, I think, I think she would be interested in, in, um, doing some other things, but, um, I have to check and see if now is the right time, but with your permission, I'll, I'll approach her.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, if anybody wants to reach out to anybody and ask if they have any interest, I mean, that we're not saying we're gonna take it, anybody, but, you know, it's just, we, we just need some people who would be interested in, in serving.
Hey, hey, with all due respect to Amy, um, um, Amy's in Rochester. Does that, does that present a conflict for serving, to continue to serve the board, because Amy's got another year to go?
Well, I, I think the answer to that question is, as long as I am a property owner indicator, which I am a property owner indicator.
Okay, all right, then enough said, enough said.
So you're there.
I am there.
How's the weather there?
It is, it is beautiful, it's really beautiful.
Wait till the winter.
I know, I know, hey, it's all about trade-offs, you know, it's, it's all about trade-offs.
I hope you like snow.
So, offer still stands, please think about people that might be interested. Um, new business, programs and meetings, so did you want to start off with the programs, Rick?
Yeah, so, so, um, I, in, in, uh, I've got some, some things, some, some chats that people are, are, are saying to me privately, and, and we should always do that, we should always do that in the open because, uh, it does become part of, uh, it does become subject to FOIA and part of the public record.
Um, hey, sorry about that.
That's okay, uh, yours wouldn't have Sophia because it wasn't, you, you know, it was personal rather than, uh, than the library business, but, um, so, um, we were, we've been trying to decide, uh, on the approach to, uh, programs and meetings. I know you guys want to talk about your own meetings, about what, whether to go, uh, in person. Uh, we have dipped our toe in a little bit, uh, and, uh, but i- in an inconsistent way, and, and that leaves us open to criticism. Uh, and we, I, 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 I'm just trying to get to a point where we figure out, well, how do we want to, uh, how do we want to begin to, A, rent the rooms again to paying businesses that want to do so? Uh, B, uh, let community organizations come and, and have meetings here. Uh, C, uh, uh, you guys and, and the other boards meet in person, or some hybrid form of in-person and, and Zoom. Um, I just, I, I'd like to, to, to hear your input. We didn't, look, capacity didn't change one iota for us going from the bridge to phase four. It went from fifty percent to sixty percent, and all practical purposes for our meeting rooms means nothing. So, uh, you know, I think we, I think we, we went from maybe thirty-one to thirty-three in the Madden, you know, it, it just doesn't mean a whole lot. Then the ma, you know, then the whole mask mandate thing, that's kind of why I've got that next item on there, COVID protocols, they could be taken at once, or, or we could talk about them separately, they overlap so much, I, I, I'm not sure how to tease it out. Uh, right now, the approach we're taking on masks, even though there's no longer a state mandate, still city ordinance, and we're a city agency, and we're gonna follow that. My assumption is that come a week from Monday, that ordinance is gonna be rescinded, but I don't know that for, for, uh, for, for certain, uh, and I have not talked to anybody on city council, I'm just assuming. Uh, if they do so, what do we do? So, uh, I wanted some guidance from this board as to, since these are essentially policy matters, uh, as to, as to what you guys would like to see for me to proceed. I've got, I've been letting a couple of partners, real talk on race, for instance, because I've, I've known those folks for years, and I know they're going to follow the protocols. Uh, I've let, uh, the health department come here, have meetings, and figure if anybody's gonna follow, uh, the protocols, it's gonna be them. Um, but I get, I get calls every couple of days, and I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure what direction to go. But we don't, you know, we're still gonna have to follow the limited capacity, I guess, but then it says, then it says vaccinated people don't count against the total. I figured that one out.
I know, it's just so weird too, because like, are you gonna ask people that if they're vaccinated?
I'm not, no, I'm not.
No.
Not gonna ask that.
We're gonna be mad about that.
Yes.
So what is the, I mean, I, I guess we have to say that if people are vaccinated, it's, uh, according to the CDC, they can take off their mask, but if people aren't vaccinated, they can't, and I, I would say that even going with our board, if anybody is not vaccinated, they would have to wear a mask. And I would say also as well with people working in the library, if they choose not to get vaccinated, they should be wearing a mask.
Right now.
I just don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't.
Right now, we're all wearing masks, because city has an ordinance, you know.
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm assuming that sooner than later, it will be dropped.
Well, let me, let me tell you.
By our next board meeting.
Let me tell you what some, on, I, I think as soon as Thursday, Champagne Public Library dropped their, their mask mandate. Uh, Urbana followed suit on Friday, only, only they are still requiring staff to wear masks. And I said, I told her, good, good luck with that. Uh, and, uh, Springfield is, has punted till the end of the, end of the month, because that's what their city council, the, the council said they're gonna still have a mask mandate till the end of the month, uh, at which point they plan to drop their mask mandate. I believe it becomes an enforcement nightmare if, uh, and honestly, I'm not sure why you want to enforce it. Uh, you know, when the CDC is saying, uh, if you're vaccinated, be free and, and, and go forward if you're not. Yeah, uh, uh, I, I guess it's vaccinated people aren't the ones taking any risk, but.
I mean, I'm still.
But, but, but Rick, I mean, and board, I mean, my, my read of what the CDC did was they said, because we discussed this yesterday at a writing staff meeting, uh, what the CDC did is they said, it's no longer necessary if you've been vaccinated to wear a mask. Um, um, what they also said, as I understand, is that if you've not been vaccinated, you know, you should continue to wear a mask, and not doing so places yourself at risk. Um, so translate that to, well, the, the CDC further said, that's their guidelines, but everything is dependent on what state, local governments decide. So they kind of punted, here's the guidelines, but they punted to what a local state or local government would do. Um, uh, you know, and, and, and I would, I would think that, Rick, it's something probably, you know, call the mayor, call the, the city manager and, and ask for guidance, you know, that, you know, perhaps the board wants to do this, tell me that I can do it. Mayor, tell me that I can do it, city manager.
Uh, yeah, I would say, I mean, at this point, we follow the city.
Yeah, yeah, and, and at this point, is that, is, is not decided anything, nor have they had any public recent discussion about it.
My, my.
And I, and I think the city's waiting until, you know, Pritzker has announced things, you know, guidelines and so on. And typically, the city's waited till the Pritzker things go into effect, and they'll, and then they'll do something.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I guess my only concern is if, say, if the city, city council says we're rescinding the mask ordinance, I would be in favor of saying, okay, everybody, you're on your honor.
Yep.
And that's, that's the way it is, we're, we're transitioning back to normal. My, my one concern is, is, uh, are families with children under twelve going to say, well, I can't get a vaccination for my kid, I'm not coming back to the library? That's, that's my one concern, I've already talked to the staff about the possibility of saying, you know what? I may ask you guys, you children's staff here upstairs, to continue to mask, and, you know, I.
Yeah, I mean.
Do that, but I, you know, just to.
Hmm, because it says, I mean, my, and there's an article in the paper talking about parents with children under twelve. I mean, children under twelve still need to wear masks.
Right, right.
But parents don't have to.
Eleven, I, I thought it was twelve to fifteen, so children under twelve, because twelve to fifteen can, can get vaccinated right now.
Yeah, so.
Well, 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 Rick, what do you want to do, you know? Well, 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 Rick, what do you want to do, you know, manage the library? What do you want to do in the library?
I, 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 I would like to reflect whatever the Decatur City ordinance is, and right now, that's what we're doing. If, if the city ordinance says, hey, you, i- if it's just rescinded, you know, then there's no mask ordinance at all. If it's amended to say, all those who, who are vaccinated, you don't ever have to, but, you know, unvaccinated people do have to. I would reflect that language as well, because we're an agency of the city at the end of the day. I don't want to. But, uh, you know, if you're asking me as, as Rick, you know, my understanding, I said, let's follow the science of the epidemiologists who've studied this stuff all their life. I've said that all. And if they're saying now it's okay, then I, I see no reason to change my tune.
Well, I can, I can tell you this, that just, what's today, Thursday? Just yesterday, we had a discussion at a staff meeting, um, kind of somewhat similar to this conversation. And, uh, the city manager is drafting a letter to be sent to city employees, kind of dealing with this thing. Um, my, my suggestion to you is you reach out to him. Um, and you start with him and, and ask for guidance on what is the, so you have a direction as to what you should do in the library, so it's in compliance, whatever the city is deciding from an ordinance point of view.
So does that still leave, uh, the programs and meetings? That still leaves that?
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, there's still a, there's still, as long as we're in Bridge to Phase, having not in Phase 5, there still is a capacity limit to, to, and, uh, there's a best practice in Bridge to Phase 4. It's not, it's not like, this is what you have to do. It's a best practice that's kept me from really opening up more, and it's this. If you've got a gathering, a staff member should be in there to ensure mask, social distancing compliance. One, that's labor, you know, I, and, and the, I, and, and two, I don't want to put somebody in that position. You know, okay, librarian, you go and, uh, watch this, you know, this neighborhood organization and make sure they're all following the rules. I just, I, I, I wasn't prepared to do that. Uh, and I'm still not prepared to do that, but it is just best practice. It's not a, you know, it's not really a part of the, the Bridge to Phase 4, so, uh, you know, we open it up, it's gonna be difficult to, you know, in, enforce those guidelines if we're not there. My lean right now is that there are, is for the library to begin to have in-person programs that meet our capacity limits, and we will have somebody in there running the program that can ensure that, that the protocols are followed. But I've made exceptions, as I said, the health department, you know, uh, and I, look, I've talked, we've got a company that comes in and does fingerprinting. Uh, uh, they're, they're, they rent the room, they're a paying customer. And, uh, I've talked to them, they've got strict protocols, they're a company out of Chicago. I trust them. But how do I say yes to them? And not say yes to everybody else? So we've got, you know, Staff Quick does, they do recruiting and interviewing and, uh, and things like that in our boardroom every Friday. So, uh, that would say haven't in over a year now, but, uh, they pay it for that.
So, I mean, is there any, like, light at the end of the tunnel? I mean, as far as.
Yeah, I, I mean, if we hit Phase 5, limits go away, and now without the mask mandate, uh, then it's.
Everybody is in charge of themselves.
Everybody's in charge of themselves, and, you know, one of the things I'm also going to make clear to staff, if and when, well, when the, the mask mandate is dropped, is that, you know what? Some people are gonna continue to choose to, to wear a mask and, and, and we're gonna let them. That's what they want to.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I still am wearing a mask, and I know that I can't, I know I don't have to, like, but I still feel like I need to.
Yeah.
It's just, I'm not comfortable yet. And people who are sick, like, people who are like, you know, maybe they don't have COVID, but maybe they're sick with a cold or something. They should be wearing masks, like, it shouldn't, uh, it shouldn't go away just because we've dropped the COVID mask, like, still be considerate now that it's acceptable to wear a mask.
I know, barely anybody got the flu this year because everybody was wearing a mask.
Exactly.
The flu numbers were incredibly low.
Exactly, so, um, I agree, it's so, I mean, do you need our?
Well, it's not, it's not an action item. Uh, I'm just trying to, to kind of feel you guys out. I mean, I, it, do you want me to, until we get to Phase 5, to continue to limit it to library programs and a select few, uh, longtime partners?
Yes.
Uh, or?
It sounds like that. I don't.
I think it's fine to go with some longtime partners, only because we have already vetted them. You trust, if you trust them, I think it's okay, and, I don't, I mean, people aren't necessarily knocking down the doors, are they?
No, no, I, I, I've got a few persistent callers, uh, but, and I know them too. I, you know, I, I also, I, you know, we've got a study group, for instance, a women's study group that, that wants to come and, um, you know, I, I, I don't know if they're gonna be really careful about following protocol or not. You know, I know some of these, these ladies, I, I can't vouch for that. Uh, and, and, uh, I don't want to be in there with them policing it.
So, so what's, what's the difficulty with just maintaining our current position for the next 45 days? And see how things develop and evolve?
We can absolutely do that, and, and in most ways, that's easy.
I agree, I think that's good.
In most ways, that's easier for, for Pam, for the staff.
Yep.
Yep, yep. And we'll, you know, revisit it, uh, mid-July. Let's see where we're at.
Okay.
Yeah, we're talking about the meeting rooms, right?
Yes, we're talking about meeting rooms. And with the, and with staff.
And what about you guys? Well, I, you know what? I'm not asking them. I, they can share it with me if they want, and, uh, we have kept track of who has shared it. The reason we're doing that is we do a symptom check, and we have protocol, uh, twice a day. We have protocols that we follow based on exposure and symptom check, but if you've been vaccinated, once you're fully vaccinated, that symptom check, that, um, you still have to do the symptom check, but the protocol doesn't kick in unless you meet two criteria instead of one. So.
Yeah.
If, if you say, uh, boy, I've got an unexplained headache, right now, unvaccinated, you gotta go home. You know, if, if, uh, or if you say, I, I was, I, I think I was exposed to, to a COVID positive person. Unvaccinated, you gotta go home, and, and protocol starts. If you're fully vaccinated, it has to be both exposure and symptom. That's when the protocol kicks in, so you don't have to tell us. You know, but if you want to share it with us, we will, we will change the protocol for you.
I, I have one more question, and I, I'm bringing this up, is, is that the people that choose not to get vaccinated and then say we have to keep sending people home, and we're paying them, like, I, I don't, I don't think at some point we should change our COVID policy, sick policy.
So, so our, our, everybody gets, everybody got 10 COVID-related sick days. Uh, that expires in June, and then
Okay.
you guys can vote on it again, you, you know, so into June, that expires.
I mean, my feeling is, is that it's really easy to get vaccinated here, and there's really, if you choose not to get vaccinated, then that's not.
And we've had people, we've had people run out of time. We've given them the 10 days COVID time and, and, and have run out, you know, and it has happened.
So, we, so do we want to put a moratorium on our meeting as well until next month? And we can talk about it then, is that?
Do.
I mean, are we talking about, you know, you're talking about this board meeting in person? I mean, every board I'm on meets in person now. I mean, I, I don't, I don't see a problem with it, really. Uh, we, we all also offer the hybrid if they want to.
I mean, I, I, I'm fully vaccinated. I have no, I've been fully vaccinated for over a month. I have no issue with meeting in person. I, I think the idea of a hybrid for people who may or may not be comfortable with coming to the meeting or may not be vaccinated, I think that's probably the best option.
Kate?
No, I agree. I, all the boards I'm on are meeting in person, and we do the hybrid situation too, so there are some people who for various reasons can't come in person, and they do.
Greg?
Online.
Um, I have, uh, my term expires June 30th, 2021. One more, one more meeting. I haven't looked at my calendar, but when that board meeting occurs, I'll be in Key West.
Woo-hoo!
Okay, so, uh, so I, you know, and, and as I offer to continue to serve, um, I'll be available as required, and I have no issue to coming into a board meeting.
All right, Carl?
No issue with meeting in person. Uh, I do think the hybridized option is the best route. I would say, though, most boards in Decatur are meeting in person, a lot of boards in other places are not. Uh, for instance, all Champagne city council meetings and all those things are still pretty sure being entirely held virtual. I'm not sure if they're in person again, but, so other, other areas are, are still doing it, but I have personally no issue with meeting in person. County board's been doing that for some time now, so.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Yeah, no, I'm okay with that too. And so if we want to hold, um, just as an announcement, then PPPR committee meeting is canceled for next month anyway. Um, and we might not need to have the finance properties meeting? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
We haven't talked about it.
Yeah.
So it might just be the next.
So, so you and I'll talk in between now and then and make the, and make the arrangements, uh, that's, if that's cool.
Yeah.
I've got, I do very brief other items, if we're, if we're done with this.
Can I, can we go back, kind of recap then? So, in terms of patronage, we're, we're following the cities. Uh, we're, we're an agency of the city, so we're going to follow what, and if, and if they rescind the mask, we will rescind the mask.
Right.
Et cetera. And as far as meetings, we're still.
Status quo, uh, uh, in-house, in-house, uh, uh, we will, we, we, if, if we have in-person programs, library programs, we'll do that, and we've got a couple of longtime partners that will continue with. Uh, we're not gonna add any more, uh, than that. Is that everyone's understanding?
That was my understanding.
And I'll be reaching out.
And then we'll revisit that next month or something? Will we revisit that again?
Yep.
And I'll reach out to city manager and/or mayor, uh, you know, to, to let them know what our thoughts on the mask, uh, uh, requirement are, and see, just to make sure that we're.
And is there something we have to vote on to return to meeting in person, this board?
I don't think so.
No, you never voted not to, so, yep. Uh, uh, the two, the two quick other items I wanted to mention, Susan asked me something in, in the chat that I want to share with everybody, because it's a, it's a, it's a question that, you know, I, I'd like you guys all to be able to answer, if you get it. It's a very good question. Uh, someone wanted to send a donation to the library. What specific area of use would be the, have the most impact, uh, foundation, friends, uh, et cetera? So my, my, the way I answer that question is usually this way. So what do you want your money to do? Uh, do you want your money to, to buy books? If you do, write the check to Decatur Public Library. And that's the, it's really the simplest thing for everybody, still tax deductible. Uh, do you want to support library programs like the summer reading program, or, uh, the craft programs, or any of the, the programs we have? Then it's the friends. Write a check to the friends of the library. Uh, they are, uh, they, they, they provide about 98 or 9% of our funding for our programs. Now, if you want to, uh, uh, you're ready to go to, towards a big ticket item such as an LED sign, a local history room, or, uh, self-check machines, then it's the Decatur Public Library Foundation. As far as what would have the most impact, uh, I, it, it all helps. It all helps. I never want to tell anybody that, oh, this is, this is, now, at some point, we're gonna have a capital campaign where we're gonna ask for specific, you know, uh, a specific project. At that point, I'll say, yeah, please don't give money for books, right? Give money to this, but, you know, you'll never say no if somebody wants to give to something else.
Hey, Rick, we just lost Sophia. Can you see if she's waiting?
She is, she is. So the other item is, uh, is that, uh, uh, is anybody have any questions on that? And Su- Susan, does that answer the question you had?
It does, thank you.
Uh, and, and, and the other thing I want to say is that next Wednesday, I'm slated to have, uh, a shoulder surgery, I'll be working from home. Uh, uh, I gotta get a COVID test Sunday, and so Monday and Tuesday, I'll be working from home. Uh, Wednesday's surgery, and he said, uh, he just wants me completely down for at least a week. Uh, so, uh, I'll send my phone number out to you guys again in case anybody needs me, but I, I'll probably be pretty out of it for a couple of days at least. Um, and, and I, he said I may be able to return to work as soon as a week later, a week after the surgery, but I won't know in advance. So Robert is your go-to guy in the meantime. Uh, he, you know, uh, uh, his voice will be my voice, and, uh, you know, we, we trust each other to make, uh, these kind of decisions, so.
He's, again, your last, your last day before your medical procedure is which day?
Uh, Monday and Tuesday, I'll be working from home because I'll have to quarantine, I'll have to get a COVID test, and then Wednesday of next week is the, is the.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, good luck.
Thanks.
Feel better.
Thank you.
So my last thing is congratulations, Carl. You graduated.
Wait, what happened?
He graduated.
Yeah, I, I graduated a, a week ago. I find that it was a week ago today, but yeah, a week ago today.
What were time?
What'd you say?
Well, I said, yeah, it blows my mind. I, it's been a week since, since, uh, about 1:00 this afternoon. It blew my mind. I've, I've had two and a half all-nighters since then, so time has definitely been, um, an interesting one since then. I appreciate you guys saying that.
So I think that's all we have, right? Um, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move. Motion to adjourn since my computer's screwing up anyway.
I'll second.
Susan, all right, Kate?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Samantha, yes, you're adjourned. Thank you for.